Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth, and the time is twelve P. M. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this afternoon's invocation?
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Our most gracious上帝Father, we ask that you continue to give us wisdom and guidance on the decisions made here that will affect the citizens of Madeira Beach. We always ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gobahi.
Here.
Commissioner Lister.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Farrell Spildee.
Here.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any additions or corrections? Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi.
Yes.
Commissioner Lister.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrell Spildee.
Here.
Yes, sorry.
Mayor Palladino.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff?
No, sir.
No.
Is there any comments from the commission?
No.
Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrell Spildee.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi.
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Yes. Next public comment. Would anybody this afternoon like to make a public comment? No closing public comment. Consent agenda? There's none consent agenda. Unfinished business done. New business. First item, public hearing for alcoholic beverage application number two zero one seven dash zero one. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
So far today, you've got an application in front of you for the purposes of an alcoholic beverage permit application for a four C. O. P. for the property located at six sixty-two Welch Causeway. This is the Slice Restaurant that's about to open. In addition to the package, you've got the staff report. You remember that there are several requirements that you must find for there to be an approval of this, and I'm going to read those elements. They're set forth in section one ten dash five thirty-two. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. You can see in the staffing, the applicant's response, and the analysis. Number two is the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Again, the applicant's response and the analysis by staff is in your staff memo. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with a particular location for which it is proposed. Again, the applicant's response and then the analysis by staff is in their memo. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. Again, response by the applicant and analysis is in the memo. And lastly, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The applicant has no outstanding fines, penalties owed to the city, so that requirement has been met. We're asking that you receive the staffing from the executive assistant to the city manager, Ms. McGrady, as well as the application. And staff is here. Cheryl is here to answer any questions. There is a recommendation in the memo for approval of this four C. O. P. S. R. X. license, and the applicant is in the audience too, Mayor.
Would the applicant like to come to the podium?
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in before Mr. Bennett speaks of. A, I want to thank everybody for coming today. This is a special meeting that I requested the mayor to call. I know it's not easy on your calendars. The city attorney is a very busy man, and so I appreciate everybody coming in today. The reason why I want to say that is I think it's a testament to y'all for coming in to take care of a business that we recruited Jack to come to Madeira Beach, and he's had some delays, not because of his own fault or our fault, but because of just the people that he has to work with to get this business open. And so by calling this special meeting today, you show that you're sensitive to the business community, and Jack certainly appreciates that. I got to know Jack over the last year or two when we first got in my car and drove around looking for a place in Madeira Beach. And so if, I'm sure he'll thank you, but I want to thank you from my standpoint because it's nice to get some of this stuff off the desk and moving. So just wanted to appreciate you all doing that, and then we'll hand it over to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you. Any words?
As Shane has said, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Went out of his way to put the meeting together. I appreciate it. If not, it would have been another thirty-day potentially delight. So appreciate that, Shane. As you guys know, we've been, we have a restaurant in Indian Rocks Beach. It's now been amazingly, probably six years. That was opened up kind of on a whim. Where myself, Ken, Suzanne are incredibly passionate about food, passionate about beer, passionate about wine. All three of us kind of in different areas. But we always wanted, I think the goal originally was to open down the beaches. We actually just recently bought a piece of property, or about a year ago, I bought a piece of property across from the Postcard Inn with the intentions to move down there. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, so we had to sell the building. We couldn't get the tenants to agree to leave before two thousand twenty-two, so we weren't willing to wait.
Mr. Bennett, can I interrupt you?
Yep.
Our mics are, you have to talk like this, literally get it in there so everybody can hear you at home. Apologize.
So essentially, we, you know, about a year and a half ago, we looked at that location. As Shane said, he reached out to us, or actually, I mean, I saw him in the restaurant. I talked to him about the potential of finding something in Madeira Beach. We looked all over, entertained the property where the Pines Group has, there's now an ATM on the location. We looked at that property. We thought that that would be a great spot on the beach, but for whatever reason, it just didn't work out. So we looked at that property, and it had sat there for a long time. Publix actually had it priced. It was outrageous, and they actually built it. They didn't build it correctly. They didn't build enough square footage there for a restaurant. They didn't have egress for the kitchen. So unfortunately, you know, it came with a big cost. But as it has kind of evolved, the location is incredible. I think everybody, when they get there, they stand up on that balcony. There's water surrounding it on all three sides. They have been actually incredible to work with. They're really nice people. They've agreed to everything that we wanted. It just, we've had a lot of delays. It had to do with engineering, just because Publix is now getting into the real estate business. So they were very critical of drawings and so forth. But we are restaurant-first. We actually serve our, in Indian Rocks Beach, we're sixty-four percent food, and that's been consistent over the last five, six years. So essentially thirty-six, or thirty-six percent of it is liquor. Obviously, you're only required fifty-one percent food, but we are restaurant-first. We take a lot of pride in our wine selections. We have over fifty-five bottles of wine that are available by the glass. We're not a bar-first. We will, as we open, kind of see what the area brings as far as what are kind of hours, I mean, hours of operation, but we'll see how it kind of evolves. But it's going to be incredible. I think you guys will all be shocked when you see it. We have an incredible downstairs area that we completely landscaped with pavers, fire pits. Well, I say fire pit. I have to get approval on the fire pit, although they did say I could do it. But, long story short, we're excited. We are literally maybe two weeks away, and unless you guys have any questions, I think that's it.
No, I want to thank you very much because you and your group are very, very community-minded, and I know you've already been doing community events here in the City of Madeira Beach, getting involved with the N. C. Double A, the softball, ladies softball league, and youth baseball out here. So, I mean, it's a welcome addition to Madeira Beach, and I can tell you, everybody is very, very excited and waiting for you to open your doors.
I appreciate it.
So thank you very much from the City of Madeira Beach, being involved and being a business that shows that you care.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'd like to second what Mr. Mayor just stated. We've all been waiting for your restaurant to open breathlessly. We just can't wait. Visited your restaurant in Indian Rocks, just wonderful, wonderful food. What is your sub-operation?
Over there, we are ten to ten.
Yes.
From Sunday to Thursday, and then we're actually ten to midnight. You know, for whatever reason, I find it actually confusing. Over the last six years, there's just not a late-night crowd on the beach. I mean, it completely dies at like ten-thirty. I mean, ghost town. So the idea is to do the same thing over here. We're going to do probably ten to eleven, Sunday through Thursday, and then on the weekends, we'll go, you know, we may open, we may stay open till one initially to see if there's a calling for it. But I have, I would imagine that it'll probably be till midnight on the weekends and probably either ten or eleven during the week.
So serving alcohol, would that be from what time to what time?
Well, I said, I said, from eleven, well, from eleven o'clock till during the week, eleven o'clock till eleven o'clock, and then on the weekends, eleven o'clock till one o'clock, or yeah, one o'clock initially. But I suspect that it'll probably be eleven to twelve on the weekends instead of staying up till one.
Thank you.
We'll see what happens.
Mr. Bennett, are you going to be doing catering also through that facility?
Yeah, I think more, you know, we were pretty, it was my doing over there. I just thought it'd be cool to have a pizza truck, so we created one. But, you know, with one restaurant, there's not a, there's not a big calling for it. We take a lot of pride in doing, I mean, we're heavily involved in Indian Rocks Beach. We do all kinds of stuff, and in the beginning, probably three years, we did every single event that there was to offer. And it's not a, when you have one restaurant and you're doing a lot of those things where there's not a huge amount of people, that's, it's not a profitable thing. So it's never been about that, but with two restaurants, I think the catering will become something more. So without a doubt, yeah, that truck will be parked over there behind the property. We've gotten permission from Publix to do that, so it'll stay over there.
Thank you.
With Madeira Beach Middle School, with Madeira, with Bay Pines, I mean, that area, the actual, you know, the diameter, the, we have a lot more, there's a lot more action over there, so I think it'll become a lot more, yes.
I have a question. Do you deliver there as well, from there?
I actually live in Largo and right.
Now, do you deliver?
Oh, I thought you said you live there.
No.
Madeira Beach. I thought you were saying, do I live in Madeira Beach? Oh, absolutely, yes. What we're going to do over there, just because I think we're going to get hit pretty hard in the beginning, is we're going to delay deliver for, delivery for maybe two, three weeks. We want to make sure we take care of everybody inside the walls first, make sure we're stable enough, and we'll start to deliver. We don't want to open up in the chaos. So I, it's going to, it's going to be delayed two, three weeks, maybe at the most a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
My last, sir. My question now. Mr. Bennett, the, welcome. We're really glad to have your business in Madeira Beach. We thank you for putting the investment and the time. There's a lot of effort that goes into it. I was wondering, we have a lot of boating people, so you're on the water taxi route there with McDonald's. Have you, have you talked about getting some type of advertisement with the water taxis to put your business on there to get that going? And do we have any boating, actual transit docks there for that restaurant?
The docks actually were part of the negotiations with Publix. McDonald's didn't want to share it first, but Publix said, well, if you're not going to share the dock, then you have to remove the dock. It's their water.
Fantastic.
So they did change the signs now. The dock, the signs don't say McDonald's parking only anymore. They say McDonald's and Publix Shopping Plus. So yes, we do have access to the docks. I, I think it's going to get a little hectic.
Yeah, that's good news.
It's pretty busy on the weekends with McDonald's alone. And then I have not either been approached or approached them as of yet, but obviously it makes sense to do so.
Yeah, I'd love to get you guys together.
It's not a big expense to do something like that, but without a doubt, if anybody, you know, wants to call me or Suzanne, we'll definitely do it.
Fantastic, and welcome again. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate it once again. Thank you guys so much. I'm excited. It's going to be great.
We're all excited. Thank you very much for investing in City of Madeira Beach.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need to do any?
Open it up to the public if there's anybody else in the public that wants to speak.
Is there any further comments? Doug, you had to do it. I know. That's okay.
Well, I mean, Doug is with the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce. I really can't say any more than what's already been said, but I mean, this, this isn't a new business. It's new to Madeira Beach, but they've been operating in Indian Rocks Beach, and they've been doing a great job there, and we're excited to have them here as well. So I just hope that you all support this. Thank you.
And Doug, thank you for everything the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber does to support businesses. All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission grant the alcoholic beverage application two thousand sixteen dash oh seven for a four C. O. P. S. R. X. license to consume alcoholic beverages on the premises with a connection to a restaurant that is a commercial recreation and entertainment facility located at six six-two Welch Causeway.
I'll second that.
I just need to jump in. The application number is twenty seventeen dash zero one, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. In my notes, I have two sixteen dash oh seven. So we have twenty seventeen.
Oh, dash oh one.
I changed my motion to reflect that the number is twenty seventeen dash oh one.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a second for the amended motion. Is there any further comments from staff?
No, sir. Motion or recommendations for approval?
Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrell Spildee.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Lister.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi.
Yes.
All right, before I.
Mr., yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt you, Mr. Bennett, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's okay. Ms. McGrady has the paperwork that you desire, and you can get to work.
All right, before I entertain a motion for the next item, the authorization to enter lease agreement for parking lot. Mr. City Manager, why don't you go ahead and give us a little bit of background on that before I.
Yeah, two things, Mr. Mayor. One, I'll give you some background. I can't take any credit for this. This was Dave and Vince, Mr. Marscano and Mr. Tenalia, putting their heads together to come up with a common solution. When you, if, if the motion is to approve, Mr. Mayor, I would like the motion to include the effective date, which would be today. So if anybody on the dais decides that this is a good idea, and I think I can give you a short dissertation on why, if you make that motion, and the second needs to include the effective date as being today's date, which is January seventeenth. With that being said, and Mr. Marscano will jump on me if I say anything incorrectly. When we decided to do the Boca Seega Project, we had a neighborhood meeting. I believe Commissioner Lister not necessarily chaired it, but was, participated in that meeting. Dave was there as well, of course. We needed a staging area for equipment, and so we used a lot that we own, and we needed to provide that to the contractor. Excuse me, I got frog in my throat today. That had a negative effect on an area business, Lisa's Cafe, and not substantially because we were out of season, but warming up into, you know, the season's going to start like tomorrow, pretty much. She had some concerns because a lot of people use that lot to access her, utilize her restaurant, and frankly, she even advertises that lot to utilize, and we get the revenue. So it's a good partnership, and then when that went away, you know, she's been fantastic to work with, but we had to come up with a solution. So Mr. Marscano found a vacant lot, and we got in touch with a gentleman that was willing to lease it. Mr. Tenalia got involved then with the city attorney to put together what I think is a very advantageous, advantageous lease, and we all know Vince, it wouldn't be in front of you if we weren't getting a good deal. So it's going to be a typical city parking lot. We won't own it. We're going to lease it, but we'll meter it, and I frankly, we had the conversation today at the department head meeting, we certainly think we'll recoup our costs if not more. So it should be a small revenue generator, especially during, during the season. So with that, we can entertain any questions on the lease. I believe it's for three ten-year periods. Is it, do I have that right, Vince?
Yeah, one ten-year agreement with the option to renew for up to two additional ten-year terms.
Which is good and very advantageous. I applaud the city attorney and Vince for the work that they did on the lease. And again, this was Dave's brainchild, and he's got enough work down there, and then he had to come up with a quick solution on this. So everybody got together real quick and did this, but we need this to happen today if we're going to alleviate some parking drama for some of our businesses in that area. So recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the authorization to enter lease agreement for parking lot.
Effective today.
Today.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
I'll make the motion to approve the parking lot lease agreement effective January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And first of all, Dave, I want to thank you very much because I know that was an ongoing a little bit of a drama, and I imagine with the finance director looking into it because it seemed like the numbers would end up in the city's favor from looking at comparing apples to apples on the.
I think Megan mentioned it this morning, Dave. What do you think? You can shove about a dozen spots in that lot?
Ish.
Ten, ten to twelve. So I believe in the parking lot that we occupied, it's almost the same. So we're basically just recreating a lot, just a block north instead of a block south for her to utilize. And then, again, we need parking in that area town even when our other parking lot returns to becoming a parking lot. So this was a real good find on Dave's part, and the landowner's been a very cooperative guy, and Vince's, the negotiations were very, very smooth. So it's another friend of the program, so to speak.
So is it maybe looking at long-term after this construction project's done on the Boca Seega Avenue area to maybe keep this as a lease for the city?
That's what you're approving today.
Yeah, I didn't know it was a full-time, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, you're going to, you're going to prove it for ten years, and then in ten years, whoever's sitting up here, if it's y'all, you'll be able to do it again if you want to, but at least we'll be able to have some information on how much we're gaining from it. But I think at three hundred bucks a month, it's a decent amenity to have a little additional parking in that, in that neighborhood, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further questions from the commission?
No, sir. How are we going to meter?
Same as we have in all of our other lots. We've got, we've got the infrastructure and the equipment to do it.
Fantastic. Is there any further comment? Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Farrell Spildee.
Yes.
Commissioner Lister.
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, and you're a good pat on the backer, so to speak, I just want to bring up, bring up parking for just a second because this isn't to cast stones, because I've got a lot of friends in the City of Dunedin, but if you've been following the news and the drama that has ensued with them implementing paid, paid parking, they could have probably looked closer and done it in a different fashion. So just, you know, the simplest of things can really become drama, and Dave and Vince and I, and when we went through that, and y'all, we did one heck of a job. The world has changed a little bit. Not everybody knows their license plate number, and no one wants to walk up to a machine and say, I need your license plate number before you can park. So those are all things that we studied and spent a lot of time on before we implemented our system, and our system, I think, is probably one of the best systems in the state of Florida, and we've been actually applauded for that. So just again, another testament to my staff and the Board of Commissioners that we're on board at least when we made that decision, because we definitely, we definitely went the right route. We had some options, and we picked the right one. So everybody gets lucky every once in a while.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next qualification for planning and zoning coordinator. Mr. City Manager, you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can make this brief, and in fact, the next two are very brief. I'd like to reference the staff report for Slice that you just took a look at. Ms. McGrady put that together. She's been involved in this pretty much her entire professional life. I was remiss about talking about her qualifications just because internally, we all know she's qualified, but I forget sometimes that you may get asked a question, and you need the information to relay that onto your constituency. So what you can see is, the proof is in the pudding in terms of what she can do on a day-to-day basis here, and Cheryl is not afraid to ask for questions or engage the consultants when needed. But if you ask my finance director, that's a budget that I'm breaking, and so we need to do that as sparingly as possible, at least through this fiscal year. So Cheryl's been called upon to do that. The other reason why I failed to maybe address this issue is it's not necessarily a promotion. In fact, all she's doing is, you know, sacrificing her nights and weekends. She's a good employee, you know? There's, there's obviously other reasons I want to pat her on the back, but this is, this is one. She's very good at what she does. And again, if you remember, Dave Healy was not going to buy into this situation unless we went with one specific employee, and so we did what we did. But, Mr. Mayor, I think the way that you've done this before is probably an effective way if you just want to ask Ms. McGrady to the podium, and she can kind of either field some questions or just kind of walk you through her resume. I was reluctant to create a public document, and so I thought a verbal interview would probably be the way to go.
Okay, Ms. McGrady, please.
Can I do it from here? Do you want to go to the podium?
I prefer the podium, Mr. Mayor, but it's up to you.
Please.
Okay.
And while you're walking up there, Ms. McGrady, I know, like I said in the last meeting, you know, first of all, when I became the mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, I mean, I know that you were brought on from Seminole, and I know your years of experience in Seminole, working in the permit department over there. So I mean, it's, I think a lot of people know that your background in this, but I just think for true transparency.
Okay.
If that's, if that makes sense. I don't know if the other commissioners are aware of your background and past, but, you know, I am, and so, and I appreciate you taking on this endeavor because it is, I think, what the city manager is asking is, not a lot, but I mean, it is a change of venue, and I think it benefits the City of Madeira Beach, and I want to say thank you before you proceed.
Oh, thank you. Okay. In a nutshell, in nineteen ninety, I started working for the City of Madeira Beach. I started working for the City of Madeira Beach. My main function was finance and building. And in finance, I did occupational licensing and daily deposits, and in building, I did occupational licenses, building, planning, and zoning. And that's where I started doing it. I worked under Denise Schlegel as her deputy for many, many years. I did the planning and zoning board meetings, Board of Adjustments. I did her clerk work when needed, so I did all of those meetings. That's where I learned how to do most of those staff reports, is because she showed me how to do a lot of those things. So then I went from here to Seminole and I did ten years in Seminole under one of the best planners in Pinellas County. He worked for Dave Healy for twenty years. So everything he learned, he learned from Dave Healy. And he taught me more than I'll ever know. And I did nothing but planning and zoning and development agreements and occupational licensing and permitting and you name it, I've done it. And I have been doing that. And then when I came back here, I started doing that again. And then I stopped to be Shane's assistant. But in between, I still answer, I always, he would ask me, Cheryl, do you know what the answer to this is? Yes. And I would fill in when needed. And I would like to say that, uh, it's, it's easy, but it's not. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of legalities into it. There's a lot of details into it. It's, it does consume a lot of my time. But, um, I'd be more than happy to do it and fill in and we'll see for the next six months how it goes. But I could probably, I hate to say it, but I could probably do a lot of this in my sleep because I've done it for twenty-six years. So, yeah, I have a lot, I, I'm, I have a, a lot of history in it, yes. And I owe a lot of that actually to our ex, and Amy knows, our ex clerk Denise Schlegel. She taught me a lot of it, yes. I did work on her for a very long time and she taught me a lot of that, as did my very first building official working here, who became our city manager.
And I'm just gonna say this publicly and I, and, and just knowing your, your background and, and your knowledge of it. Because I know a lot of times when I have a question on some of these things, the city manager, you're usually at your desk and I hear you say the answer before I even ask the question. So you are very knowledgeable. I don't know if any of the commissioners actually have any questions for you at this time.
I don't have any questions, but I have a big compliment.
Oh, okay.
You know, as, as a, an engineering company, we work with a lot of cities and we look, we work with their zoning and planning person and engineering and drainage and so forth and so on. And, uh, in the past ten years, I think we've done probably ten or six projects in Madeira Beach. And every time that I have worked with, uh, Cheryl, she's been extremely professional, extremely knowledgeable. And, uh, really it's like a, um, you know, treating public very nicely. So I just also wanted to extend my appreciation to dovetail to what you were stating, Mr. Mayor.
And actually, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's a, a great analogy because, uh, your, your firm has done a lot of projects in Madeira Beach, Seminole. And, uh, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I worked with Northside Engineering a lot when I worked at Seminole as well. Yeah, thank you. It was very nice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but, uh, again, I just wanna say that very simply, I disagree with the mayor, but I heard that he said, you know, it's not a big deal, uh, what you're doing, but you're, it's a big deal. I mean, you, you have a lot of, of work to, to, to do this community planning because, you know, there's a, there's a lot of insurance, the CRA ratings. There's a ton of work to be done here. And you know that.
Yeah.
And I'm walking on eggshells here, but, you know, you should be compensated for it. And I'm, I'm, I understand why we're not doing it. I, I do understand why we're not doing it, but I'm not happy about that. So I guess what I wanna do is, is basically apologize for telling you to work harder for less money. I really, I really, that, that bothers me to a certain extent because I think I asked you, I needed a few more details about how, you know, because I knew you were with the city of Seminole and you've been with us since nineteen ninety. You've done a, a, a ton of preparation to get to where you're at and that should be rewarded to, that should be rewarded. Again, I, I apologize for, for putting you on this six-month trial period, but I, I ask this commission, if, if you don't come up here on a daily basis, like I, I know you do, Mr. Mayor, but if you don't come up here, talk to her and ask her how much time she spends on these things because it's a ton of time. I mean, and she'll, yeah, I, I, she really needs to be compensated for it. So in six months, let's bring this back up and, and, you know, do us right because we're not doing what's right, right now. And that bothers me.
I mean, I'm doing the.
I, I know you're gonna say whatever it takes to, to get this city done. Because you, as well as I, as well as everybody up here, we love Madeira Beach. I know you do it, well, I'm not gonna say you do it for nothing, but I know you, you do it for, you are doing this for nothing. I'm gonna say it. You're doing this for nothing and that's, that's not right.
That's okay, but thank you very much.
Um, and, uh, Commissioner, uh, maybe to get a little bit more gel here between the commission, but you've just brought up maybe less than six months and maybe review this and see how it's working. Because I think we're gonna be seeing, uh, the next item that's up on here, uh, it says it all works together. So maybe time to take a, maybe a review at it in a month or two to see maybe. And once again, this is the city manager's employee. We have to also see if there's money in the budget for it.
I understand. Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, uh, a, a couple of things. One is, I, I keep saying after March, and I don't know if life will ever get back to normal from a zoning and planning standpoint because of these, the, the developments that are, uh, being proposed. But I'd like to spend some time evaluating how this works after those approvals because it certainly will change. But as Commissioner Lister, uh, alluded, the amount of work just on a normal daily basis that comes in is more than enough to keep her busy and I still need her in, in my office as well. What I suggest is, and again, uh, oh, city knows, but Cheryl and I have a relationship. I think it would be more, it'd be more proper if you guys just want to address this as a budget request in the budget of the, uh, next fiscal year. I, I would, I would refrain from, uh, rewarding her or awarding her a raise until we go through a budget process and see, because there might be some personnel reorganization that we have to do. But y- you gave her a four dollar raise last time and if we could or we will, we'd happily write the check back to you because it, it just wasn't worth the grief. And so let's see if this works. Let's give it six months because that gives me three months to get the developments out of the way and three months of normal life, i- in quotes. And then let's see if it works from that standpoint. Because Vince and I gotta crunch some numbers and make sure this works from a budgetary standpoint as well. So we do, I'm sure she appreciates it. I don't wanna speak for Ms. McGrady and, and, uh, I, I would say the same comments. But at this point in time, let's just, let's, let us get to work and then we can, we can talk about that come budget time if you, if that's okay with y'all.
And I don't think you're looking for a motion and a vote on this. I think you really need just a consensus because once again, this is your employee.
It's my organization, obviously. We complicated it by creating a relationship and we just wanted the board to be aware of it.
All right. So would you like a, a consensus from the commission? If the commission pleases the commission?
Absolutely.
We have a consensus, okay. Thank you, Ms. McGrady. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next, uh, authorization to award professional services to Calvin, Gerard, Dino and associates in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, uh, before I entertain a motion. Mr. City Manager, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I always screw up that word too, Mr. Mayor. I think that's Giordano, but I goof it up every time I say it too. Um, you're, this is Dave Healy and Louis. And, um, I, I was speaking to somebody on the phone today about it. I can't remember who I was talking to. But I, I'm still struggling with the fact that I, at, at least in re- recently, I've had a planning and zoning director that did do planning and zoning responsibilities. But I always have to have these, and I call them the heavy hitters. They're experts. I mean, everybody knows Dave Healy. The guy's a stud, right? Same thing with Louis. I'm saying, I can say the same thing about Al Carrier and his, his personnel. We still use these guys quite a bit. And, you know, two years ago, when I was struggling with this, I had conversations with Vince. Um, Dave is, you know, gifted in, in this area as well and Cheryl. Um, I, I just don't know if it's an area because of how complicated the development is down here that we can't just proceed like this. And I kinda, this is the structure that I always wanted and I was told wouldn't work, but the other structures haven't worked. So I don't wanna do this just to say I told you so, but I think this is the way to go. And so again, that's why I wanna give it a good, solid six months. Get the, the big developments out of the way, whichever way they're gonna go. And then let's see what like normal life returns to and then move on. So the contract that you're awarding today is just a, a renewal, frankly, of the prior contract that the city had with Dave Healy before I even got here. So basically, it's an à la carte menu. It's literally like a restaurant menu of services that we can pick from based off the budget that we have to get done what we need to get done, frankly. So again, Cheryl's very smart, very gifted in this arena and she can do the day-to-day stuff. But there are gonna be some things that she's just not qualified for and that's where this comes in. So, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, Vince and I are gonna try to make this match up. Uh, we'll certainly make it match up in the next fiscal year's budget. But before we even did this change, we were over budget. And we were over budget because we were using Dave Healy and Al Carrier and those guys all the time, but for a good reason. We just didn't expect the workload to be what it is. So, right, you're not, we're not spending any money today. This is just, uh, a, a contract not to exceed because the two hundred thousand dollar figure is probably what we expect to spend.
Commission, any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. In, in the breakdown of services, uh, how many hours, would that be like thirty-two hours a month, did I read?
That's just what the average has been. But that's certainly going to change when the Bill Karns, Jim Holton thing ends at our, at our level. So he, he, that's what he had been doing. When I spoke to Mr. Healy about this arrangement and, and the structure that I wanted to see, I let him know the numbers that I had to work within and he said exactly what I've been telling you. Let's get the big stuff out of the way. Let's see what normal life turns into and then we can see if we can make this work. But he did tell me from a budgetary standpoint, we, he's gonna make it work for us. So it's not a set amount of hours. We do have them coming in and, uh, Ms. McGrady, correct me if I'm wrong. Louis is gonna come in once a week. You, but why don't you go ahead and give him the schedule? Please turn on your mic.
Louis is gonna come in, um, once a week if needed. He does a lot of our stuff. I send it to him, uh, via email or he comes fix it up. Marcy will be here twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Every other Thursday, we have what we're calling an executive committee. So it'll have, uh, Louis, Marcy, the building official, myself and the fire, if necessary, to meet. We're lining up appointments with people who have major projects, things, you know, above my pay scale that everybody can sit in and answer any and all questions at that time so they won't have to keep coming back over and over again. And we're gonna do that every other Thursday. So we're trying to put some structure into the department so that, um, when Louis is here, we utilize his time very effectively and efficiently. Same thing with Marcy. So, and more, less time they're here, then obviously the more cost-effective it is.
So if you can see the one thing through what Ms. McGrady just stated is, and we're happy to do it for you guys and I know you're all under pressure, but when you've got that neighbor or that business owner that says, hey, I dropped off my permit this morning. Why isn't it processed yet? We have thirty days to do that. We usually turn them around in like twenty-four hours. To all the credit of, of, of my staff, you know, permits aren't gonna get processed in a day. That's, it's unfair and I've been asking my staff to do it. It, it, it just can't be done. And, um, our vice mayor, I'm sure he knows going to some of the, not condemning other cities, but it, it can take up to a month. It takes time. And so A, we don't wanna rush through it. And in a world of getting sued and having ethics complaints filed against staff every other day, I don't wanna put my employees into a situation where they're rushing the job just because, you know, the, the mayor called and his neighbor wants to change out his door and, you know, that type of thing. So, um, we're, our, my goal for my staff is if, you know, one week, let's try to turn them around in a week. And I think that that's very fair and, and that, that's, that's good enough time. Some of them may take a little longer. Most of them are gonna take a, a much shorter. Um, Frank and the fire chief and Dave and all, all the guys involved, they, they really excel when it comes to this stuff because they know I'm all about customer service and getting them in and out the door. So, um, but we need your help. So next time they say, why isn't it processed? Please ask the question, when did you drop it off? And do you know that they have thirty days to process that? We're gonna inform them at the front counter. They're gonna get that information. They're not gonna like it. And when it's too late, they're gonna call you. You call me, I'll get it out the door. We'll get it, we'll get it processed. But if you could help out staff in that arena, um, and, Mr. Mayor, I know you probably get more calls like that than anybody, but.
I think of a hundred.
You get a lot of them, but, uh, like Dave always says, you know, we're peddling as fast as we can. And, and this is gonna change things a little bit, otherwise we're gonna pay a lot of money.
Not to cut you off, Mr. City Manager, but, uh, the, the city, since we brought the building department back here, I mean, you have, you, you turned some of these things around in a week, two weeks. And it's, and it's a lot of the stuff's pavers. I mean, it's, it's simple, smaller fences. And I, I see where Ms. McGrady being in that and, and I see this actually probably, I know you, you say two weeks, but I, I know how old your machine is oiled and I kinda see a week. But, but giving people, you know, I, I think it's an outstanding, uh, way. And I think customer service is there. And I've heard back, like I said, I can guarantee you, it's been a hundred people in the last year or two that, uh, we've worked through some of these permits.
And I don't wanna say we spoiled people, but we have, you know, and that, but that was part of, about bringing it home because they were waiting, they had thirty days or the county wasn't calling them back or our contracted person wasn't counting them back. So if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it right, like you always say, Mr. Mayor. So it, again, we get thirty days. We'll probably get them turned around in a couple of days, maybe a week. But if you can help us out in that arena, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one or two other questions. Um, so, um, would we be charged hourly?
Mm-hmm.
By, by the team?
Correct. And our, our, our bills are itemized, so it, you know, when we're doing certain work for one of the developments, the, the developer's gotta pay for that. So when Vince gets a bill, he knows how much is coming out of our coffers. I think we pay the whole bill and then we turn around and build the developer or whoever's working on lately. Obviously, it's been Jim Holton and Bill Karns. But a lot of that is, is reimbursed. The, the, the developers require to, uh, pay a majority of that. We have some things that we have to pay for. I mean, we're on the hook for some, certain things, but, um, otherwise, like I said, it's just an hourly rate. There's a menu of services in there depending if it's a senior planner and associate planner, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. All right. Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we pride ourselves on being a full-service city and customer service is, is wonderful. And, you know, Doug Andrews is sitting out there with our recreation department and it's morphed over the years. Recreation department and it's morphed over the years.